I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions, concerns?
I need to take something off the agenda. On the second page, the water policy, we'll move that to the next meeting.
Okay. The last item under new business. Any other changes or corrections? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Minutes of the regular meeting of September 2nd, need a motion to approve. Motion and a second. Any changes or corrections? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. And the September 8th special meeting held at City Hall, need a motion to approve? Motion and a second. Any changes or corrections? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Under the claims bills in between, in the amount of $112,194.65, need a motion to approve? Motion and a second. Any comments? All signify by saying aye that approve.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bills, current claims, need a motion to approve? At the amount of $177,712.46. We have a motion and a second. Any comments, corrections, or...
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Page 10. The bill here says damages to Forest Street project, $563.83. What is that?
Daryl Fritz. He had some air in his lines and did something to his trailer water lines. And he put in claim.
So this will be billed back to the contractor then, or...
There was talk about that. I don't know if that's what...
There was talk they're going after or filing a payment.
Just withhold it?
Okay. It's not going to the insurance company?
Of course not. It did go to the insurance company. And Public Works chose to pay this amount, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Any other comments or concerns? I have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Go to communications from the public, Mr. Don Ackerman, honoring our heroes report. If I can come over? Yes, sir.
I always like to, after we've done our event, give you an idea of what happened this year. I think we owe you that much because you invest in the project. And that goes for everybody in the public. That's why I don't appear to assume. I'd like to talk about a little bit what we did this year. It was different from last year. Our parade was a little smaller, but it was a nice parade. It went very well. We brought the wall in. That was the beginning of our event. Yeah, we did that. It was a good parade. It ended at Centennial Park. Could probably end a little bit better this year. We smoothed it out a little bit. And probably before I do that, I should say, all the people that worked on or for Honoring Heroes, stand up. Give you an idea. That being said, the parade went very well. It was a nice parade. People enjoyed it. We brought the wall in. The wall was set up. It went up very, very quickly, like it should have done. We also brought in a tent. For those of you that went down and saw that, it was great. It was bigger than I thought it was going to be in that what it had inside. Not the size of the tent. But I had no idea it was going to be there. Many people enjoyed that, and that was there for almost two weeks. The Freedom Ride went through the wall well, and the wall went down nicely. We had music bands all week in the park. That seemed to go across fairly well. And let's talk about some of the things we did that were different. The bands was one. Every night in the park, we had bands. We had no problems at all. There were no problems in the park as far as things being done wrong, et cetera. The weather did not do as well as we would have liked for the bands, but that's the way it kind of works. So the area worked well for them. We tried something this year that was different, and that was transportation from the hotels to the park. We proved that that can be done successfully. I will tell you, not a lot of people rode the shuttle service that we provided. But then I would say for the city folk, the way I look at this is, the people that stayed in the hotels all knew there was a shuttle that arrived at their hotel, that took them anywhere they wanted to go in town and dropped them off. So when they left here and went back home to wherever they went to, they said, hey, that little town had a shuttle, went all over town and took us to wherever we wanted to be. Now, what does that mean? I don't know. I can't answer that. But the shuttle went well. We also code with the fair, and we provide a shuttle to go over to the fair and back three times a day, two and three times a day. Again, we made that work. How many people rode the shuttle? I don't think that's really bothering them. And the reason I say that is because the people in Edgemont said, we're really glad that you've thought about us. So it's more, there's a lot of things you have to look at in the way it happened. Those things were all successful. Couple glitches on the shuttles, but not a major issue. So those can be done, and were done. And it went very well. I can only say, on the entire event for the last, for the two weeks, that I understand that our sales were up in Hot Springs. I will tell you that I'm being told that the sales were down across the hills for sturges. So I don't know what that means. I don't know what that means that we drew people in or we didn't. The issue is, sales were down across the hills from sturges across. We, our sales were up. We enjoyed doing it. I think it was a seamless event. I've heard no complaints. Not a single one, which is really amazing because usually we hear more, at least one. We had no complaints whatsoever. Now, what I've provided, the city council, and as of any citizen in this city, because you are either in the county, if you're in the county, you're probably in the city. If you're in the city, you may not be in the county. But that being said, we do funds from those two areas. We have a tabulation of where every penny went. Basically, what we collected for honoring our heroes this year, we collected $27,456. We spent $23,539.35 so far. We still have some incoming bills. And it's important, I'll give you the tabulation of where everything went, if there's any questions. We still have money in the account, and our intent is, we have a meeting on this, and our intent is that honoring the heroes is not going to bring the wall here next year. It's not going to happen. But what we want to do is we want to put a memorial on the wall there. And that is our focus. That we want to put a memorial on Hot Springs for the military honoring our heroes. We have a little funds left. We're going to generate more funds once we make a decision on what that's going to be. And that money's accountable. Anybody wants to know where it is, it's in the bank. It's in a special account. And the team will get together, some of us, and make a decision on what we're going to do. We've talked to an artist in town. We may use or we may not use. We haven't decided what that will be. Once we make those decisions, we'll come to the city and we'll talk to people what their thoughts are. But that's our intention this year, to take those, a little bit of funds, should be around, let's say $3,000 once we finish off the rest of the bills. That money will be in the bank, in the savings account, and we'll work on a number of things that we did last year that everybody enjoyed, like the Woolies Honoring our Heroes event, which is a coat and tie event, and maybe our chicken wing event. We'll do a few things this year focused on that. But having said that, do you have any questions on anything I provided you or comments?
So, well done. I really appreciate it.
I was going to say thanks. I appreciate it too. This is perfect.
Did you mention the car show to folks?
I didn't mention the car show. I left the car show out. We had one of the finest car shows in the history of Hot Springs. How many cars do we have?
Sixty.
Sixty? We have sixty cars. And they got bigger trophies than they'll ever get out of the car show forever because we helped them with that. And you helped them. I mean, the money is spread amongst all the issues that we work on. Everybody gets credit for what we did. The Southern Hills
Drag racing.
Drag Race Association made more money this year than they ever made at any of these events. And we helped them do that. Also, just tabbing on that, since you mentioned that, thank you very much for what you did. Raise your hand. There's the guy did all the work right there. But we also were able to give a great deal of money to the Boys and Girls Club by co-working with them and having them work on the event out there. You'll see it in the newspaper. We gave them somewhere around $3,000. Having said that, are there any questions from anybody else on what we did? Thank you very much. We may or may not come back to you for more money. As we move into this thing that we're going to do, and we don't even know what the thing is yet. But I do have to say to the public and city council, it's a pleasure to work with a group of people who are willing to take a chance and to do something good for our city. So we did that, and it was a pleasure for us to do it. And it's a pleasure to work with people like you that allow us to do this.
You can, you can come to us, and we may or we may not give you. We certainly appreciate everything that you did, Don.
Yeah.
It was a very nice week.
It was awesome.
Thank you very much. Are there any more comments from, or communications from the public? Yes, sir.
My name is Lon Sharp, and I am asking for a chance, and maybe it's, this is not the time, so I'm asking procedurally. I have some research information I wanted to be able to share with you regarding an agenda item coming up later, the review of the Bill Martin Radio Tower. And so I didn't know if this was the proper time, or if we can hold that, and if I'll have a chance to provide that then.
We can hold it. Any other communications from the public? Seems there are no more. We'll move on to personnel. You can look on the agenda, and that's for your information. I'd like to go now to Resolution 2014-21, transferring rural service district property to urban district service, urban service district. I guess there's quite a few pieces of property that are going from rural to urban. And I need a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Are there any comments or questions from the council? Any from the public? I have a motion to approve. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Going to ordinance. Second reading of ordinance 1149-2015, the appropriations ordinance for our budget. There were a lot of meetings with concern to this. And the concern of the council was not to increase taxes for the city so that our request for appropriation from the county would be the million five thousand six hundred and eighty as has been for the last three years. So this makes four years in a row. The city is balancing their budget without asking the public to divvy up any further than what the county does to you. We got no control over what the county does. But if they want to be greedy, they can keep doing what they're doing. So I have the second reading. I need a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion second.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have any comments or concerns? Any changes? Yes, sir.
I have just a comment on the budget process. I was at every, I think I was anyway, at every meeting in preparation for this appropriation ordinance. And I had several surprises. I learned a lot. But one of the things that I think is very, very important when we're spending taxpayers' money is the accountability of that money by the people we give it to. Because that's what we do in many, many cases. We're given thousands and thousands of dollars to people that ask for the money to do things. And good, bad, doesn't make any difference whether the projects are good or bad. If we give that money to those people, we need a report back, just like what Don just gave you guys on every penny spent by that organization, not just what the city gives us. Because when you put all that money in a pool, you don't know what's the city's money, what's the county's money, what's donated money. And I just think it's irresponsible, and I don't mean to step on toes, but I think it's irresponsible to give that money out year after year after year without an accounting of every penny of that money. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you for your comment. There were a couple of issues in going over the budget where I think the members of the council thought it was appropriate that we get information from those requesting money. And there were a couple of times that we didn't get any information. And I think next year, when we do budget, we'll take your comment with due course concern and probably request anybody that gets money from the county or from the city to report back to us on how they spent that money. And make it a part of their requests. Asking us for money, they're going to have to report back to us on how it was spent. I think that's all appropriate, and I thank you for your comment.
I appreciate Mr. Lindsey coming to every budget meeting. He's the first person in my three years that I've seen out of the public come to just even a couple of budget meetings. I mean, I think he got an eye-opener. I mean, as most people would, if they would just take the time to attend some of the budget meetings. So thank you, Mr. Lindsey.
Of course, some of those meetings went way into the night. But that's what budget is about, is making those decisions on where the money goes and how it's going to be spent. And what we're going to request from the taxpayers that pay this money to the city. And we thank you for hanging in there with us. It was quite a chore this year. But I have, I have a motion to approve and a second. And if there aren't any further questions with regard to this second reading of the ordinance, I would... Yes, sir.
Sales tax numbers, which we talked about last Monday night, they're still, they can't be correct because you have a sales tax fund that shows a decrease, but your seven penny sales tax shows an increase. That's what we're saying.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. So with that, I would take a voice vote from each member of the council. Debbie, would you call overall?
Ashley?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
McCollum?
Yes.
Romney?
Yes.
Schwartz-McMach?
Yes.
Tesher?
Yes.
Leeney?
Yes.
Motion carried. Let's go to new business. Propane pre-buy. Who's that?
That was one that was tabled last week until we would receive some more information on it. And as far as I know, we never did. I never had anything.
I seen it. It's on Harley's desk. I seen it.
Is it?
Yeah. He wrote, he got from three different outfits. He showed them on tape. We all know what happened, but it must still be there.
Aye.
PJ Rose, the cheapest one.
Okay. But we don't have anything to give to the public, so...
But we need to act, but we talked before the Zoom, if we're in pre-buy.
Yeah, I think we do before the end of the... Yes, sir.
Yeah. On your propane, you need to be real specific on your bid specifications because there's more than one grade of propane. Okay? There's a motor grade of propane which has a lot higher energy content than the heating grade of propane. And if you don't take that into account in your bid, you may think you're saving money by buying a cheaper grade of propane, but it's actually going to cost you more because you're going to use more.
Thank you for your comment.
I guess we need to also know what the current state bid price is versus what those prices are.
That's true.
Current Harley is cheap. Cheaper than Harley's. Pre-buy was cheaper in the state.
That sounds good.
Good. We got some golf course right before you got that.
Well, we'll carry that over to the next meeting then. Sidewalk grinding, is that another item that was carried over?
Yeah, Public Works.
Public Works?
We didn't discuss it this week, did we?
No. The last, last that we heard is there was supposed to been a, them guys that did the grinding before was supposed to be here, and they were supposed to get ahold of Harley. We have a subtle feeling now, but I don't know if they ever showed up or not. Do you have any idea, Debbie, if they showed up?
I haven't seen them or paid for them.
So that's what that was left at, is anybody that, I guess we're more or less looking for the council or the public or anybody, if they knew where we needed some cement grinding to be done, or if we were going to do it with these guys, or if there was locals that were going to do it, it was all something that we was going to have to find out. Like I say, it was kind of, it was one of them things that was left in Harley's ballpark. I don't know if they ever showed up or not.
Nor have you got any public works, I think, though.
Isn't that appropriate?
Yeah, I'd be happy to look at it. We need some areas of new grinding, and it might not be worth doing the grinding this year. We don't have enough areas to do it. But we did help the businesses out two years ago when we did it.
I know it made the Freedom Trail a lot nicer to walk on for them guys, and for them guys with their fuel carts. Even the walkers are...
When is the department head meeting? Knowing that is?
Thursday.
That's where we need to get some information on spots you need to be on.
It was last year. They saw, no, she does it every week a lot.
I wasn't told anything about it, so...
It's on the agenda.
I didn't hold any.
Yeah, City Hall.
Okay. So there. Might be one.
We'll look at it again and try and get some info.
She's going to be back once a month. I thought she was going to be back.
Austin.
I think that was the one she was... She's not going to be this first. I guess I don't know.
I thought she was going to be back Wednesday.
She'll be back in town. She thought on Thursday, but it's not going to come.
Okay. Back to Public Works then. Thank you, Dwight. Purchase a transportation vehicle for inmates. Jason, are you here? The concern was, as we're spending a lot of money transporting people from Rapid City to Hot Springs and back to the jail system, they are working for the city for a slight amount of money that we have to pay, but the transportation is costing too much. And I think what Jason is looking for is... There he is. Sorry about that. Come up here. He's looking for a vehicle to transport these people. So, am hiring somebody in Rapid City? Correct, yeah. To do that transport and coming here and working and then transporting them back?
Yeah, as kind of a suggestion. Right now, our inmate transportation program ends October 3rd, so we're going to have to do something for next year, something, change it up a little bit. I guess some of the problems that we've had with the current situation is just the cost of transportation for Prairie Hills Transit is pretty expensive. The restriction of the vehicle that we have, we can only transport two inmates. And then the inmate start time and end times don't really coincide with the most efficient time at the golf course. And then also the two round trip, two round trips that they have to take from Custer to Hot Springs. Because currently, right now, we contract with Prairie Hills Transit in partnership with Star Academy, the transport from Rapid City to Star Academy. They drop off two of the guys for us. We pick up in Custer every day and transport down to Hot Springs. It was never like this originally because we had the state home involved, and they would do all the transporting. But since they've kind of bowed out, it falls on our shoulders right now. So as a proposal, I guess for 2015 is possibly eliminating Prairie Hills Transit, also to purchase a larger vehicle like a passenger van or a Suburban of some sort, and to possibly hire a Rapid City resident so it only be one round trip. They would pick up in Rapid City, come down here, be employed at the golf course or another department, work at the city, help supervise inmates, and transfer back up to Rapid City. Debbie, so...
Have you checked on any prices of... My suggestion was a 15 or 16 passenger van would be better to work with.
And I have. Right now, you know, I don't, I think it's a '97 Dodge full-size passenger van at Federal Surplus is $6,000 with 50,000 miles, so the price is pretty reasonable. I estimate somewhere around 100 days to recover just that cost right there that we would save by not paying Prairie Hills Transit.
One question. What...
How many would you transport at one time in this?
We could, we could transfer up to whatever the bank, yeah. So if, if there's a project that... Yeah, if the, if the project required four people or six people, we could request that, and then the DOC would be able to give us that many people. So...
Would our park system and stuff, did you use inmates too?
Right now, what we have to provide for inmate is we have to provide some direct supervision. We have to, the supervisors go through a DOC. We have to, the supervisors go through a DOC class that takes about hour to two hours. And then we basically just watch them, make sure they don't have any contraband on them. They're, they're standing around. If anything happens, we just call DOC and say, hey, you know, this is the situation. And we got to do two calls every day, roll calls they call anyway, so no matter. And we have, and this year's been great. We've had, we've had great guys and they've been great help. That's one of the problems I would try and solve of the issues is just to find, find labor for some of the work we do. And it's cost effective. I mean, just the people we have right now with, with the transportation and the two inmates we got, it's somewhere around five and a half, just under $6 per man hour. But that doesn't include any insurance, workman's comp or anything like that that the city would incur on a regular basis. So if we were able to get more inmates, I think that would offset the cost. We could get it down to somewhere around $3 because the inmates themselves only get paid $1.25 an hour. A lot of this cost is, is transportation cost.
Why couldn't your van driver live in Hot Springs?
And it could, it would just be then two trips, so.
Why would it be two?
Because they would leave from Hot Springs, have to Rapid City, pick them up, come back down, then go back up to drop them off and then come back to where they're there. So you have, you'd incur that cost, which is a possibility, so.
Can you get the money in your budget for that?
For next year, yeah, yeah. I mean, hopefully what we do is we'd save it on the wages and salaries because then we wouldn't have to be paying $815.
Well, that van driver, then if he drove down from Rapid, what would he do all day?
He would be a supervisor for the inmates, but hopefully we can even get some sort of a person that's maybe skilled in the construction trade. We can use him for building maintenance and that sort of stuff. That's the sort of projects that they're really good at, you know, just building vehicles and that sort of stuff.
So if, if we carried, if we carried more people, let's say you needed three?
Yep.
And they needed four for the parks, that's seven. If we would have to have somebody supervising your group and then we'd have to have somebody supervising the four that went for the parks?
Yeah.
So how do we accomplish that supervision?
Yeah, that would, I mean, if other department.
There's already some supervisors.
The other departments do have two or three people.
What about Mark's one?
Mark's, Steve is.
Yep, Steve, Ozzy, so. There's a few people and the class, it's, if we get enough people that are interested, we could request DOC to come down here, put the class on. It's, it's a video. They, they basically explain some things to you and kind of go from there. I mean, they do a background check on you and all that stuff, so you got to give them that information.
So when do we want to look at purchasing this vehicle?
It would be on the 2015 budget, so sometime after the first, we'd look at purchasing or else just talk to Federal Surplus. We could get it now, I mean, or else we could wait until after the first, but it's probably come on 2015's budget. But the goal for me is to get it up and running by March of 2015. So I could get the program, the orientation for these guys set up so we get the ground running.
So you're going to hold this van for you until next year or what?
Well, it hasn't been sold for the last two years, so we might be able to stay there. They have, they have four or five different full-size vans if that's the route we want to go. And they range from 15,000 down to 5,000. This is the, I think the 97. They got some newer models up there, but they're all around 50,000 miles on it.
Whose insurance covers these guys transporting while they're working?
It's, it would be our, it would be our insurance that would cover the van itself, but as far as the liability and all that, that's all DOC. They're, they're charged, the way they bill us is like contract work, so it's like a subcontractor. They, they have to cover their, so if they get injured on the job, it's as long as we provided with them with the safety equipment that we provide every other employee, then their workman's comp that they have through DOC actually gets charged, so.
I think this would be a good thing to do and eliminate that transportation thing with Prairie Hills.
I've had the state homes tell me that to keep them in the loop because they are interested in using it too. It's just their, their issue was with the transportation and that's why they bowed out this, this last year, so. I mean, possibly, I don't want to say it, but.
Is there ample supply for these people? Do you ever have, you know, I need eight, there's only four?
Sure. For the most part, depending on the job, if you're looking for skilled labor, you can request it, but you may not get as many as you need. So we did some tree work last winter. I requested sawyers, a lot of them, that you have a significant number of people that are, are trained with the chainsaw. They were able to give us a number that we wanted for, for some time, but then they kept pulling them off on other jobs to go throughout the state depending on, on the year. But so far this year, it was, it's, they've been able to give me everyone that, that I've requested. The biggest drawdown that I've seen this program be is if it's a revolving door. So if we get a guy for one week, then he's gone, we got to retrain him and you really, it's just, you're really just spinning the wheel. But this year has, has been pretty, pretty productive. We've only had, we've consistently had two and we've, out of, out of consistent two, we've only had a rotation of about six people, so it's been pretty good.
So is there anything that the council needs to do at this point?
I just want to introduce it at this time to, you know, to, you know, I'll present you a little bit more of the numbers here later on and put it in your packet later this month and then you guys can consider it for, for the future, okay?
Thank you, Jason. I think it's going to be a good program once we get there next month. Now I need a motion to allow Jason to go to training for the SDGC Superintendent Fall Conference in Pierce, South Dakota, September 28th, 29th and 30th, and this is a part of his contract.
I'm going to make a motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve his travel. Are there any comments or questions? Motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Historic preservation recommendations regarding 315 North River and 717 North River.
Can I make a motion that this go to public works? To look at this, these recommendations? I'm on this commission.
Okay. So we just need to move it to public works?
Does that be all right?
Yeah, you know, one of these, we already went out for bids.
I know.
Is that the?
I don't know. You know, we'd have to rebid it again.
Yeah, you don't have to rebid that. We just, you know.
You got a copy of the letter that historical commission meeting of September 3rd?
Yeah.
So that'll just go to public works? We have the review of Bill Martin Radio Tower Use Permit on Review, Change in Scope of Bill is here tonight and Scott, you have some new information that's come forward? Did you step up?
The information I got was when I went to pick up the sign from the property that I had to post for the use permit for Bill's property or use permit. The contractor on Fourth Street came up to me and asked me how he would go about getting licensed up to put water up to the tower. So I asked him why water would have to go in the tower. He didn't know, but Bill had come out of his house and at that point, he told me that it's going to have to go to the radio station to support the radio tower. And so that's when I contacted the mayor and the mayor chose to bring this up for review in front of the council because the scope of the project had changed from the original application. And as far as specifics, I've had lots of visits from lots of people in my office and some of them are here tonight and I think they could share some information with you as far as their concerns. These are the people that were sent the letter, just then 200 feet of this property. And the reason for that is that they are directly affected as, you know, as citizens in that area. And that's why they're sent that notice so that if they have any concerns, they can bring it to the council. And I think some of them do have some concerns.
Could you pass that picture around that, that we saw earlier this week?
I could.
Or last week?
I'm going to get that from, can I borrow your picture, please? I'll be right with you. What this picture is going to show, this, this is from research done by some of those neighbors and I'll pass this around. What this picture is going to show is Bill Martin's house and church here in the hole of light. And it's hard to see in this lighting, but there's an X up here on the hillside, right here, where the tower site is that Bill's going to put the tower. And the GPS location of the FCC license is actually down below. And I think you had a conversation with Bill Martin about that, didn't you, Mr.?
Yes, I did.
Okay. So in my, I didn't convert my GPS over to NAD 27. I was using NAD 83 as far as my locate, and it came down below also. But in either case, it's not at the point that was approved by the FCC. And so I have a little problem issuing a building for that fitted tower that's not in the right location. But this, that's the map that was provided to them.
Can you add some comments, sir?
Yes, my name is Lance Sharp. We're an adjoining property owner and I've spent much of the afternoon with my computer and with Google Earth and doing a little bit of math and some careful calculations. And incidentally, before I talk about the discrepancies in the location, did find it interesting that the, that the hole, the beginning X, the marker where the tower was supposedly going to be built is about 280, and this is using the scale of Google Earth and zooming in as far as I could, so these are approximate, about 280 feet from the back door of the Martin residence or the Joy Fellowship. It's only 256 feet from our door or only 200 feet approximately from the residence over on Fourth Street. I think the address was 345 where those folks were expressing concerns about potential interference. So I mean, it's not, these are not small concerns. This tower looms above all of us. The concern about the change of location, I mean, this is kind of a shifting tower that moves around, it seems. The application places the tower at a very specific place, is 103 degrees, 28 minutes, 4.49 seconds west, 43 degrees, 25 minutes, 47.55 seconds north. That's longitude and latitude. That's, or that's the, where the marker hole is. That's at 3517 feet. The actual application takes it at several, I could read off the specifics on the latitude and longitude, a significant difference, meaning the bottom line being that the, the application for, for the tower is 43 foot, 43 foot lower than the beginning excavation site where the tower would go up. I mean, that is a significant difference. We're talking about a 30-foot tower, 43 foot higher. I mean, that's, that doesn't match the federal application. It's, they would put the location of this tower 52 feet above Canton Street. So the top of this tower would, would suddenly become, at 30 feet, would become 82 feet above Canton Street. And the federal application wasn't for 30 feet, it was for 30 meters, which is 98.42, 52 feet or 98 and a half feet. If the tower were matching the federal application, then, then we would have a tower on that knife ridge, on that edge of town, that would be looming 150 feet over Canton. Within 200 feet of some people's homes over top of them, within 250 plus feet from ours. It's, it's a moving target and it just doesn't quite match what, what was shared with you, I believe. Furthermore, also in, in reading the application, there were very specific questions on that application that had to be, you know, application for the license and there wasn't any specifics about it being a community project. This was a, an internal church project. It, it didn't talk about public news and, and having those kinds of public benefit. This neighborhood immediately joining has been, I think universally opposed to this and we would hope that you would honor the zoning of that.
Back behind you, Bill.
I actually talked to the FCC and that's where the map came from. This was their application map that they showed. So I asked how much leeway they have in their proposed antenna site and he said none. They expect the antenna to be built exactly on, on where it is on that map.
Please give us your name and your address.
Tanya Weisbeck, 345 South Fourth Street.
Thank you.
So that, that was part of the FCC, what they provided me with. The other thing was, is, and can I ask Bill a question?
Sure.
Part of the FCC application process was to provide public notice?
Yes.
During that application? Did you put it in the newspaper or anything?
During the application process? Well, you know, this is part of all the usual review that we're doing.
No, it's before your application with the FCC was approved.
I, I do not remember reading anything about that.
I have.
See, the company I'm contracting with down in Texas is Nexus Broadcasting. They're stepping me through the procedures. They never mentioned anything like you mentioned here. Okay?
I do find that.
You know, I, I can't, I can't internalize all this stuff myself and that's the reason I'm depending upon this company that we're contracting with to do this. Now, I would like to address some of the other things if that would be okay?
Sure.
Okay.
Just to make it clear though, that prior to your application being approved with the FCC in, in February, you didn't put it in the newspaper?
Didn't I put anything in the newspaper here, no?
The, the FCC said that we could appeal based on that fact, just, just so you're aware.
Okay. I was not made aware of that.
Thank you.
Okay.
No?
Let me address a few things. First of all, we do not want to put water to the tower, Scott. We were looking, we're researching the future to see about putting water to the lot behind the parking lot. We have, had at that time a contractor in the street. I was told it might be a good time to utilize him while his equipment was there, that it might be cheaper for us to do it that way. But after a couple of weeks of doing this, and our street was closed for over eight weeks, after a couple of weeks of doing this, he said, you know, you might be better off asking somebody else and getting an estimate to putting water back there. Now, let me get my glasses on so you can see a little bit about my own notes here. We are, we were not preparing a hole for a tower site. I had been on the hill with a rotor hammer drilling in various locations, trying to see what would be the best place to put a tower. You know, these guys that look at this aerial view from satellite, they can't see everything that's underground. And so when they placed the tower, they, they didn't place it even on the hill where I requested it. They placed it in front of one of the dog houses in front of the garden. And, and I was upset with that, but then the guy came back and he said, hey, listen, you're probably going to have to move it anyway. You need to get up there and research the site. And that's what we were doing, the rotor hammer. We were drilling holes to see where the best place to put that on that hill. Okay? After we do that, okay, then, after we find the place, then we go to Anderson Engineering. We have them come in with their GIS equipment and they're able to pinpoint that spot down to the foot on the planet. You got to be to the foot on the planet or the FCC will not approve it. And so you got to take it back to the FCC. You got to file an amendment on your application and they will, most of the time, allow you to move that tower site anywhere within 5.6 kilometers of where they originally placed to move that tower site anywhere within 5.6 kilometers of where they originally placed it. And so, that is the other thing we were trying to do. So, our digging was just investigating. We're not, we were not up there digging a hole for a tower site. We were pecking around in the dirt, and that's all we were doing. We're not excavating at this time. Were there some other questions?
I think the use. How you were gonna use it?
The use.
Oh, the use. Yeah, well, we discussed the use at the, at the other council meeting. You know, we like to use it as an information station. You know, our town does not have a radio station anymore. Of course, we want, and way, way we fight it with FCC was religious broadcasting, information, and, you know, some sports events and stuff. That's the way we wrote it down, we sent it in that way, and they granted us, you know, the construction permit.
Hey, Mr. Martin, can I say something?
Excuse me?
Can I say something?
Sure.
I pulled the application off an FCC, and it didn't say anything about local broadcasting. It was purely religious.
Okay, well, I can't, I can't dictate what the FCC puts on there. But, you know, this is the way we proposed it, and they accepted it. And so, we also wanted this to be a station for the town in case we have emergencies. And the FCC is considering allowing these low-power stations to go to 250 watts in the future, and allowing us a couple of translators which we could almost cover the county with. And so, we're looking at this in that respect of being something even broader to help our community. Now, like I said, the FCC will allow us to move that, that tower. You know, if we have to, we can move it out of town. You know, we talked to the church. We're still investigating things. One of the reasons that we're asking about, you know, a trench to bring water into the lot, we wanna see what the cost is gonna be. Oh, this is gonna be costly, and we gotta have, we've only got so much money to go, and we've only got so much time to do it. And so, we want to expedite this as quickly as we can. We just need some help. We need people to share that information with us if they have information. I'm drying out, excuse me. Other questions? Barb?
Barb Sharp. I have the description of what Mr. Martin proposed as his mission. And it says, it says nothing in here about community activities or sports events or in times of emergency. It just talks about educating the public about viral and-
I'm dry, I'm not-
And teaching them to live a more moral life. That's the only description in here about the function. The other thing that puzzles me is Mr. Martin is telling, telling you that even though the application is a legal document, and it states what the FCC approved, what he's saying is, they told him something different, that that was, even though it was approved, he could make changes. Well, there's nothing in the application that says that it was a provisional application. It says 30 meters from ground level behind his house, and it says the latitude and longitude, the location, so-
The 30 meters is the allowable tower height. We do not ask for 30 meters, we ask for 10 meters.
No, it doesn't say allowable. It says 30 meters. So, even if he changes that, and it's what originally stated is 33 feet, it still now has to include the height of the hill. So, it's giving the impression that the tower is 33 feet from ground level. And that's not the case. It's 33 feet plus the additional 60-some-odd feet of the hill. So, it's a lot higher than his initial approach to you. So, it's a constantly moving-
May I read this? This is a letter to me from the FCC, okay? The height of radiation center above sea level, 1,090 meters, okay? The height of where they placed the tower was- Let me see this, the brown one there. It's less than this. It's like 1,059 meters, which is 31 meters below where they pointed the, placed the antenna tower on the ground, which was by the doghouse, okay? And so, I had plenty of, I've got plenty of room to work with as far as height goes. I decide, you know, we, we didn't wanna go with a 30-meter tower. That would mean guidelines. We'd rather go with this, basically a stick, you know? This little 12-inch tower, 33 feet high, on the hill somewhere where we can, you know, as we're researching it, you know, find a spot where we can put her down. And so, that is a overall hike, the antenna structure above ground says here 30 meters. We don't wanna go there. 10 meters is as high as we wanna go. Our radiation pattern there is almost as good as it would be at 30 meters. And so, that's the reason-
Why didn't you put that in your application, then? If you only wanted to go so high, why does it say 30 meters?
Well, this is what they're allowing. And see, they would also allow me to move across town and go even higher in elevation, you know, if I wanted to go by the water tower, which is basically locked in with the transmission, you know, high voltage transmission lines. And that is about 1,230 meters, you know, it's much higher. But, like I said, you got the high voltage lines there, and it blocks that in. So, you know, it depends upon where you are and the average terrain height around you. And so, the reason we haven't even considered buying, purchasing the equipment yet, is that if we move this from where, you know, the contractor down in Texas had placed it via satellite to our next, you know, to where we would like it to be, you know, the FCC may change the frequency on it. We may go from 92.7 to 103.1, you know, so, anyways, anybody who'd like to look at this is right here.
When was the application made with the FCC?
The application was made in late October of 2013.
Okay.
And it was granted about mid-October, I mean, well, it was submitted mid-November, and it was granted February 4th.
But doesn't, doesn't the, doesn't the FCC require you to go through the city first?
Yes, that's why we're here.
Before you make application to them?
It's recommended, I think.
And my, my consideration, my, my sticking point on this-
Okay.
Is the point from that picture that went around that shows where the FCC says, this is where it's gonna be, according to the application, to the FCC. And where you're taking, what you came to the council with-
Yes.
Was that it was gonna be up on the hill. So, that's totally in conflict with what that picture shows.
Well, the contractor, sorry, the contractor I'm dealing with in Texas does hundreds of these, and he says, get your user review, then we'll reset the tower. And so, that, that was the counsel I got from him.
That, that is changing from catfish to trout, as far as I'm concerned. So, what you came to us and asked for, and was approved, by the way, on a five-to-three vote, was for one location up on the hill, and the FCC had already said in February, before you came to us, and said it had to be behind your church, down on the ground, not up on the hill.
That's not a set-in-stone thing, and radio stations-
It ain't nothing set in stone, Mr. Martin, but the fact of the matter is, it went to them first. It didn't come to the council first.
Tell them how much it's gonna cost to change.
No. What, you know, I have to jump through the loops as they're given to me. And the loop that they told me I had to go through first was the user review to get permission to move it, and then I can move it after we get the GIS. We get the GIS, we go back to the FCC, they approve it. Now, if you wanna do it this way, just predicate your decision upon our getting permission from the FCC to put it in that location. That'll just eliminate all of this.
Well, we have, we have what was brought to the council in contrast to what we've seen from the FCC, and as far as I'm concerned, and my vote counts here, is that this is a change in scope of approval. And I would like a motion to, on this, after this review, to either accept or reject the change in scope. Now, are there any other comments from the public? Yes, ma'am?
If you're gonna make the motion to change the scope, I think it would be beneficial to be clear about what change you're making.
The change in scope would be to rescind the motion that was passed at the last meeting. Yes, sir, way in the back.
My, my comment only would be that when this went to a vote last time, I don't believe Mr. Martin was entirely forthwith with the information that we've shared tonight. And I would just caution the council before you vote again that I would have a hard time believing even what's said tonight.
Oh, oh my.
I would like to sit down with you and show you, ma'am, from this, okay? And get apology, please. Okay, would that be okay?
We could've done that.
Well, you know, I did approach you, and you-
Way in the back of the room. What is your name, sir?
Darren Belkus, 209 Canton Avenue. I live directly across from where this tower is to be placed.
Darren Belkus.
Thank you.
He spoke at the last meeting, too. Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Name is Olson, 222 Canton. As long as there is a defugality on the things matching, why can't it be rescinded? And if everything can be put in place, then everybody has a chance again. And as well as the council getting a do-over in the neighborship.
Thank you for your comment, ma'am. Anyone else? Sir?
To the comment about broadcasting off the tower, if it's an issue to broadcast this radio station off the tower, then the cell phone tower that's sitting in place right now probably would not be in the same area. That's it.
Your name?
Chad Olson.
And your address?
I don't live in the city.
Okay.
Could you clarify that?
I'm not sure that I understood what you said either, Chad.
There was suggestion of not being able to put it up next to the water tower by Mr. Martin. If there was a broadcast issue because of transmission lines, which he had stated, the cell phone tower would not be in place next to that water tower.
Oh, I see where you're coming from. Okay. Well, I also have a concern that was brought to me about the area within 400 foot of where the tower is going to be, that it's going to be disruptive to other services that are available for those people. And some of these are telephones, um-
Radio.
Radio, internet, and paging service. And as I understand it, one of the people that live right in very close proximity to that, where this, where we were told the tower was gonna be, is a firefighter. And that would be disruptive to his pager and his telephone. So, if that's the case, I see a safety problem here in the fire department being able to contact their people in case we have a problem.
I don't know, I entirely believe that it's gonna affect all those things, but I'm not an electronics expert myself, so, but I really, that's a stretch for me to believe it's gonna affect all those things.
I think there's something about it in, exceptions in their permit from the FCC that we didn't get. I saw it online, but some of the exhibits weren't printed, so I don't know what they say. So, before anything's done, I think we all ought to have a copy of that to read it.
Well, I would think if, you know, ham radio, a lot of those guys put out some serious power with those things. And it's way more power than what he's talking about with his low-frequency situation here. So, I just, I don't really believe all that, that last stuff there. But like I said, I'm not an expert in frequencies and communications and stuff like that.
Well, I'm not either, but what I'm hearing is-
I would like to see the FCC, what they say, I guess, could possibly happen.
Ma'am, you had another comment?
Yeah, actually, the FCC on the website, it talks to, it's called blanketed interference. And homes or people around that 400 feet, they can expect, expect blanketed interference to electronics, all that kind of stuff. And the FCC-
At what wattage?
As I say, what's, what's wattage you're talking about?
We're talking the low FM, the low-power FM station.
At 100 watts?
Yes.
I think you get more interference off these fluorescent tubes than you would off 90.7.
This is what the FCC is telling us. And they also said that as part of the permit, you would be required to fix all of our interference problems for up to a year after the tower goes in. So, that is on the, what the FCC was telling me as well.
Well, that may be the case. I don't know. I'm not an expert either, and I didn't get all the information from the FCC. But you do have a change in the scope from one place to another. We voted that it was gonna be up on the hill. FCC says it's gonna be 40-
That's where the FCC has it planted.
40 or 60 feet landed. And that-
I was just mentioning that, he did mention a radio station. And I just quoted the contractor when he said he's taking the water to the tower.
Right.
But Bill is the one that sent the station. So, that's where I based my change in scope.
So, there was really not enough water gonna be plumbed up to the hillside?
No.
Nothing.
Not, not to the tower, just, just to the lot behind the parking lot. And nothing's gonna be tied in until the church makes some kind of decision. And so, most of what we were doing here was investigative work, trying to step through the hoops as they're given to us without getting ourselves in a knot, you know, and having to spend a lot of money, and then come back and ask the city council to approve something that they might say no to, let's say. And we want something, we need something in this town that's an information station. Of course, we want our ministry through that, through our church. It is a church ministry, radio, information, some emergency broadcast, if we have to have that. And, and, you know, this is the way we have, we have dreamed it out, okay? And this is the way we propose it when we send it into the FCC.
Well, I still have the issue that the FCC had already stated that you should go through the city first before you approach the FCC. The FCC made a decision in February of this year of where that spot was gonna be, as long before it changed to the council two weeks ago. And that, to me, is a change in scope.
Well, it wouldn't matter, no matter where he's gonna propose to put it, these people are never gonna agree to anywhere over there anyway, so, that's kind of a moot point. I mean, you can tell that they're opposed to anywhere in the area.
Yes, ma'am?
I find it rather irresponsible, Mr. Grimes, to say that it's a moot point when it's the main point. If the city council is to vote on what Mr. Martin presented, and it's not even part of a legal document from the FCC, I don't understand how it could say that's a moot point.
Because no matter, even if he did put it where they're saying to put it, you're still not gonna be in favor of-
You don't know that. That's an assumption on your part.
Well, we voted, well, we voted because we thought we were putting it, or he was gonna put it where it was proposed, so-
No, he-
And you were in opposition to that then, last council meeting.
No, he said, no, he said, I'll just leave it at that. No point, I made my point.
Well- Well, are there any further comments?
I would ask the council to vote.
Yes, sir, back in the back.
I just, one...
Last comment.
I would... Your name and Brian Daunt, 345 South Forest Street. At the public meeting, I brought up the issue of the interference, and I appreciate you considering it. I guess my one question would be, the first time someone in our neighborhood needs to call 911 for a medical emergency or a fire, and they can't because of interference from the tower, who's, who's gonna fix that? Who's gonna be responsible for that?
Ma'am, again?
I want to comment in regard to what Mr. Whitney said, that no matter where Mr...
Mr. Grimes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Grimes, sorry, sorry. No matter where Mr. Martin put the tower, the neighbors would be against it. That's based on assumption, on an assumption that we don't have good reason to object to it. We, we find that we do have good reasons, and so it's very important that we, we're judging it not because of some irrational thing, we don't want this tower anywhere. We're trying to base it on some legal documents and reliable information.
If he was to put it in his front yard, would you oppose it?
Wouldn't he set that in front of it?
The reason we would oppose it is because of all of the reasons we've given.
Okay, so basically, as I said, anywhere in that area, would you approve it anywhere in the area he's asking?
No, because of the reasons we've given. You're making the, you're trying to give the impression that, that we don't have good reason. Why would we, why would we approve something that's a detriment to the environment? That's, kind of doesn't make any sense to me.
We're talking 100 watts. We got light bulbs that emit more radiation than that.
Yeah.
I just wanna say one thing, this is a used permit on review, so you hear it from the neighbors, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the neighbors are speaking up against this, and I think that's who we ought to listen to.
Here, here. Thank you. Okay.
No, I'll just say I supported Bill. I supported you on this first, but there's just too many neighbors opposed this. You gotta, you gotta find a different spot, Bill, from what I can see. I hope you can, I hope we get it somewhere.
I do want the city council to know, I don't hold any grudges here, okay? I don't want to be in your seat, okay? And I appreciate what you do down here. I understand, however you vote, we'll take it, we'll live with it, okay?
Yeah.
Thumbs up to you.
I supported you on the first one, too, but I guess, and I actually drove out there this afternoon and, to look, and I gather where you're thinking about putting the towers at the end of that, that power cord that runs up out of that little tin building or up in that area somewhere.
That's too many rocks up there, and it's too close to the property line, so it wouldn't be that far up. But we had to check it out.
Yeah, so, and I guess I can understand the concerns of some of the people here with having a 30-foot tower. If it was lower, power poles are 30 foot, actually, they're 35, but they're six foot in degree.
I'd, I'd consider it a power pole.
So, but I guess I think there's some stuff that needs to be, I've gotta go along with Dwight, I think there's too many, and there's some stuff that needs to be, you know, sorted out and, and get in the road.
I just believe the benefit to this will greatly outweigh any potential harm.
Bill, have you talked to the owners of our shut-down radio station?
Oh, yes.
See if they might wanna...
Don't have $300,000. No, and, and...
I, I strongly feel our community needs a radio station.
I do, too.
We can't put it where all the neighbors don't want it.
You know, my dream, my dream with this is that, you know, we need, we really need a lot of help in the summertime. An information station, people coming into town and seeing signs about information station, and where to stay, and what to see, what Hot Springs has available, you know? And mixing that with that message I love, that Christian message. That, that was my dream, okay, in this. And I don't want to see that terminated, okay? Because we really do need a lot of help tourist-wise in this town.
The very last page of the permit that you got describes your permit, and it mentions nothing about anything but religion, which is fine, but it does not, it is not a permit to do what you just said. It is not.
Listen, the station belongs to the church, and it, we can do these things. We, we don't have to, we don't have to subscribe to some kind of FCC agenda on this. We really don't.
I would, with all of that, I will now ask for a motion to rescind the previous action of the council.
I'll make it in a second.
I have a motion and a second to rescind the...
The used permit?
Used permit on review for the Bill Martin Radio College. Are there any further comments from the council? Hearing none? Please vote in the affirmative by saying yea. To rescind. To rescind, vote yea.
Yea.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I see two.
Yep.
Motion carried.
I just did it, I wanna make this comment for Don Alstead, 'cause he called me at night and said every nasty word he can say on the phone. I thought it was very unprofessional of him, and I appreciate him never calling my house again and talking like that.
That's your opinion, Greg.
I know how you talk to me at night.
With regard, let's move on to the trickle filter bids. This come from Public Works?
Yes, yes, Public Works. A bid for PKG contracting at 406,900 to repair the trickle filter.
You said repair.
PKG.
You said repair, but they're actually...
Changing.
Removal and disposal of existing trickle filter tank and non-salvageable distributor mechanism components. Supply and installation of new tank and distributor. PKG contracting at 406,900 is the low bid, and I have a motion to approve with a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. What else are we gonna do? Are we...
Milling, alley and street milling. A little bit for milling of 30, 3800 feet of alleys in the downtown area. A little bidder was Simon Contractors for a cost of 57,000. I recommend that we accept that, yeah.
I had a conversation with, with the city engineer today, and he said that he would rather see us do the street crack and seal than to do the alleys. That's his recommendation.
I thought we had budgeted money for both of these.
We did, we did. I recommend we go with the alleys, we gotta get something done with this, we gotta do some alleys to plumb the curb.
So I have a motion to approve, Simon Contractors, for the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
So, are you telling me the engineer said there ain't money for the chip ceiling?
No, he said that if it, if it came to either or, the chip ceiling would be his first consideration. The alleys are not.
I thought there was not a vote. I look back in our budget chart, and that's what shows that they've left. So they could do this and $40,000 worth of chip ceiling or whatever. How much is the contingency? Because all we can do is 49. So we'd only need...
Gotta be an urgency.
Well, it is.
It's not...
Streets are falling apart.
These are budgeted items.
Their streets aren't that bad, guys. Drive around some of the other towns in the hills.
I have, and our alleys are terrible.
No, they're not.
Yeah.
They're sort of back streets in Rapid sometime. See how good their streets are.
And we are not going to do Valley View, from what I understand.
That was the recommendation, and we, we need to figure out some drainage here, guys, before we fix this street somehow. Some storm drainage. Because it's just gonna keep doing the same thing once we fix this right.
Well, we just agreed. We got a lot of others who are ahead of that project.
I guess it's my recommendation, we don't want something...
Well, we only had one bid, it was Hills Materials, it was $110,750 for Valley View project, which is 25,000 square feet at $4 a square foot. That's $100,000. And mobilization was $10,750. Grounding, scenery, and...
That's just for grinding it up and putting it back down. Nothing for blacktop or nothing.
Right. Well, the mag water or the hole that...
No, there's no mag water in this.
But they said something.
That's on the alleys.
Well, nobody's opposing this, I mean, we're all in agreement not to do the Valley View at this point.
Okay.
Process to utilize a binding agent, asphalt foam to help stabilize surface, cold process to be utilized. I think that's a good area to look for a street assessment up there with curvy gutter and actual drainage. That's just my opinion.
I think we have to start somewhere, I mean...
So we've addressed the trickle filter and the alleys, and we are not doing Valley View. Okay. Moving on. Easement for, request for easement for the life of the structure at 909 South Sixth Okay, I've seen...
Okay, I can, I can address part of this.
Thanks.
Kathy Sutherland is here, she's one that I've been working with, she's been working with me as far as this structure. The council on two different occasions have seen a plat for this area, and this is a plat, the area next, right next to Proville, right across that drainage. And they're trying to work through the process to get this transferred and sold and closed on this. And they found another discrepancy, which is not plating this time, it's simply an encroachment of a building. I think we're all familiar with that storage building that's down there by Proville, and that actually encroaches 1.8 feet into the public driveway. And we run into this a lot. I don't know if this particular council has issued an easement for life of the structure, but there's nothing we can do to move the building. If the building is ever destroyed for some reason, or can't for any reason, then any new construction would have to comply with the ordinance, and the easement would go away. That's an easement for life of the structure. And that's what they're requesting on this. What I would recommend to the city council is to give this conditionally that that old sign pole that is way out in the driveway would have to go away, and that fence encroachment, that's not a permanent structure. And all they're requesting is for the structure. And so, with the provisions that the sign pole would go away and the fence would go away, it's my recommendation that the city council grant this easement.
I'll make a motion if we do that.
So we have a motion to accept the easement worth of provision that the sign pole and the fence go away.
No, when you say fence go away, or just move it over in line with the building in case they wanna keep the, whatever it is? Still be the right way.
The encroachment would, would go away. They can move the fence back.
To the, to the side of the house.
Right.
You'll see it in the picture, it'll have to go into the crockery, basically.
Yeah, no, I'm not, maybe I chose my words wrong, that it would go away. The encroachment would go away.
Okay.
We don't want them to throw away the fence. So, and you may, you might wanna ask to make sure that they're okay with those provisions. We have Joe and Kathy right here.
Is that...
Yes.
Okay with you?
Yeah, I can move that fence and move the whole sign down, it's not a problem at all. We'll probably look at a future fence, I talked to Scott about that, and we'll just make sure we keep it out of that easement, and put a little security fence on that for the insurance purposes and security.
Any further comments from the council? Ready to vote? Everybody in agreement with the easement, request for easement? Vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Water policy fee for vacant houses. Council in room.
Yes, sir. I can actually vote on this, 'cause I have to pay this $17.50 a month. But I've had a lot of people calling me that's doing this, and I understand we're taking half of the people that's on this to report or to a collection agency because they're not paying this. And some little lady called me and said that she didn't even know why she was getting it. So evidently the city didn't, you know, explain it very well in the first place. But I'm at fault, I voted for that water policy, but I think this is, this needs to go away. For one thing, they don't charge all the people that's in compliance with it. One person refused to do it, so they said, "Oh, okay, you don't have to pay it." Evidently, we're using your meter pit or something else, you ain't gonna have to pay it. Which is one of the worst houses in Hot Springs anyway, but evidently, I guess they can pick and choose.
It's not my house, is it?
No. Yours is second to the worst.
The city is currently using his pit, though.
It don't matter. It doesn't mean. You know, before, before I got on this council, the city raised the water rates to take care of infrastructure repair and different things. So I guess to me, that's where that, if we got problems, that's where that money should come from. To me, this is just hindering... 'Cause I have a lot of people pretty mad about this, I mean, they're, and I don't blame them.
So have I. Hindering what?
Less. How, how does this help when you charge someone for something they're not receiving?
For an example, behind where I live, there's a house that's been vacant for 20 years. You did the Fifth Street project, you put a brand-new water main in, you put a brand-new service main in, you put a brand-new meter pit. Why should we pay for that and it sit there vacant? And if that line leaks, the city's gonna be responsible for it, and you're gonna have to fix it. So therefore, we as the community pay to fix all these lines that break, or trees that grow into sewer lines, old sewer lines on abandoned houses or vacant houses?
We're already paying anyway. They're, like I said, they raised the water rates to take...
We're already paying anyway. They, like I said, they raised the water rates to take care of this, supposedly.
No, I don't think that's what the water rates were raised for.
Can I ask you?
That's what they were proposed.
Yes, sir.
Water ever been hooked that house?
I don't think so.
Yes, it has. Well, I mean, the man was living there. He was on water and sewer.
It was seven years ago Smitty passed away. That's the house you're talking about, isn't it?
It's longer than seven years, but yes, that's correct.
And the kids. He has a daughter Southern California, and the son lives in Oregon. And I have approached him a couple of times about what they were gonna do with the property. And they've never, never done anything with it.
Exactly.
And my understanding is that they're being billed, and they must be paying it.
Well, how many people that we've been charging with vacant houses have sold them properties or done anything with them?
I don't think it's that. I think it's we have
Oh, yes, it is.
No, listen, they've offered the water until they're alive. They paid for it.
White Platte told me that how many people want to have empty houses that either they redo them or tear them down?
I'm just saying
Wait a minute. You took words in my
That's what you said at that meeting. Either they fix them up or tear them down.
Neighbors that got a nice house do not want an abandoned house that's been sitting vacant for ten years ready to sell them. If they're not up
So the city can do something about it?
No, the idea is we're offering the water
We're holding grass eight inches, aren't we?
Yeah, well, evidently, we're gonna do away with your water bill because you don't want to pay the money that leaked
That's a totally different subject, Craig, and you know it.
Well, I mean, not my thing.
My thing is, are we gonna do sewer next?
And by the way, that water bill's been paid in full. Mr. Romy.
And it was on the committee to do something, but we're gonna wait.
When we were first talking about this in committee meetings, wasn't it said that part of, there was multiple reasons for you doing it? And I'm not taking any side on it, but I'm just remembering from the meeting.
It was because of all the empty buildings downtown.
Well, and all the people who they can never find a current address on to send them bills that have never paid. There was tons of them on that side of it, I remember. Am I right? That that
Yeah.
There was people who had sent out bills. They don't have current addresses on. And also for situations like he was talking about.
If you want to start a storage shed in Hot Springs, buy one of these old junk houses, pay two hundred bucks a year in taxes, and just have a storage shed.
In other words, you
Maybe that's okay with people. I don't know.
Tear it down, they only pay twenty dollars a year in taxes?
What's that?
So you want them to tear it down, so they only have to pay twenty dollars a year in taxes to have two hundred?
If it's a nice, oh, yeah, tear it down. Or fix it.
Well, there's one right there in town streets. It's been sitting there for twenty years. Why it's never been
Back of the house has fallen in. It was brought up by the nuisance committee a while back, and nothing was ever done about it.
But see, wasn't that part of why you did it? Because of the nuisance part of it? I mean, somebody doesn't go there long?
It don't matter.
Right.
It don't matter.
Again, basically, this is an ordinance, if I remember right. This is a water ordinance.
And it
And this can be changed.
Oh. And I guess that's what I would recommend is that it goes before the code committee or whatever committee that is, and let them rewrite the ordinance as you guys want it. And we can go through the ordinance legally and step by step what should be done. And if there's, if it passes through the council at that time, so be it. If it don't, so be it. That's my suggestion.
So we want this to be turned over to the code enforcement.
That would be my recommendation, yes.
Which don't consist of anybody.
Well, that's
Well, I'm good at delta committees.
Well, it was pitched as an availability fee, and I still, I'm scared the next step is we're gonna start charging sewer rates for people who aren't living on their property or they got a house too. And then we're, just because they're just does this don't mean we got
A lot of people told me when I got on the council to run, run the city like a business. And rural water, if you're on rural water, you're fifty bucks a month, whether you use one drop of water or not.
If you sign on.
If you sign on. Well, these houses signed on at one point.
The gentleman was not here that mentioned something to me, or else I'd bring it up, but he said that when you first got on, he believed that of you. He says now that says a lot of, a lot of decisions you make, you wouldn't do that in your own business.
I would like to speak for what I would do, Craig.
Don Alstey, ask him next time you see him.
Okay, I will. No, we all, we all pay for vehicle insurance, but do you use it?
I rent my truck. I sure do.
But it's availability if there's a problem, correct?
That's the law.
Okay, but the thing is, you have insurance in case
This is no difference.
All these vacant houses are tied off to city water. It's live up to
So what do you think, Bob? Should we do an active sewer one, too, then?
Should we do empty lots, Kevin?
Sewer is usually based on what you see
Because the homeowner is responsible for the sewer line all the way to the
Should we do empty lots, Kevin?
Availability fee is what we're calling it.
Yeah, because water stuff got to you. It should be.
No, I don't think this was called an availability.
Yes, it was.
Fee.
That's what it's called.
Is it?
Okay.
I mean, if you got a vacant lot and there's no services to it, and I've been away from the city for a while, so I don't know about tap fees and stuff. By the time you cut the street, dig a service in, pay a tap fee, put the water to the property line, patch the street, how much money do you have invested?
We're not talking about new installation.
Seventeen dollars a month or a hundred and seventy dollars a year or whatever.
We're not talking about new installation.
And we're not talking about
The water provided to the property line right now or to the house?
Well
A house that's out there for twenty years, they can go pay a water deposit tomorrow. You can put the water meter in and turn the water on.
Well, let's, let's move this out a bit because that's going to go to code and ordinances. And maybe I
Do I have to make a motion for that?
And maybe I'll become part of that committee. How does that sound? Okay. Moving along. Committee reports. Administrative. Georgia?
Carl and I met on Wednesday, last Wednesday, and we discussed personnel policy. It gone around to each one of our departments. And we looked at things that they felt were good or bad or whatever. We talked about those, and we'd still like to bring it to the rest of the council and set a time when we can talk about it. Possibly next Wednesday. I don't know. We'll have to see how Cindy wants it done, so I'm just gonna refer to Cindy.
Okay. Thank you. Public Works, White Wingy out.
I don't have my notes with me.
Okay. But you did have a meeting.
Yes, we did have a meeting.
Were they in there?
He just hanged them.
There you go.
I pass them around. Those parks they
Right.
They're like You pass them around. It's about how long.
There's still Miss Boulder.
There's two, there's two sets. That's what the parks
Well, it's not. They're so different from the Ah, let's see. Talked about the bid opening dates of the trickle filter and the milling, which we went over that tonight. The pressure-reducing valves have arrived, and the vault for Twenty Fifth Street, pressure-reducing valve reconfiguration is ordered. It should be here within a week, it says. And that's the priority, wanting to get fixed first. And we're gonna, we're gonna do work on all the pressure-reducing valves, and we're gonna put a help me out with this, Tim, a relief valve.
Right. Pressure relief valve.
No, just a relief valve. At the, at the MRF, so if we ever got a high water pressure spike like we did here not too long ago, it'll pop that valve off and kick the water in a harmless area and not in businesses. The leak has been fixed in the heat exchanger here at Pacific Center. We found that, and that's good because that's gonna save us a lot of money. And that's it. Let's stem this.
Thank you, sir. Code and ordinance, we don't have any. Parks, Recreation, Beautification, Wes Grimes.
We had a meeting last Wednesday, and we picked out colors for that playground equipment, and we ordered it, so I guess now it's gonna be a decision if it's gonna be a community build or if we're just gonna hire the company and have them install it and work with our guys, or I guess what we're gonna do.
How much was the equipment?
Price is on that one sheet. It was seventeen thousand. There was also a digger that was ordered. It wasn't, it's not on this price sheet, but it was, that's what it was. There's a front and back view to that is what the two pictures are, or the two different pictures are.
So it's sixteen thousand, five hundred for the structure and twelve hundred for freight?
Yep.
Seventeen thousand, seven.
Well, like I said, there's a digger, like a sand digger that's like the one up in Butler Park. I didn't have a picture of it or the price, but I'll have it. That crouch, whatever, they'll, they'll give us a sheet on it, too.
And that goes with it?
No, it's, it's separate. We had a total of like thirty-some thousand in our budget, but then to their recommendation, basically, you spend half of the equipment and half for site preparation, plus the fall protection, like the wood chips. And then if we have to have them installed. So that's why we did it the way we did it, because if we can't get the community to come together to help build it, we end up firing them next year.
Same thing I do.
So Wes, you think there's some installation next year?
I'd like to see it this year, but I really doubt it. Yep. Kirkside Park.
Is that it, Wes?
That was it.
What color you got?
Oh, we picked blue and it was gray and a darker blue. Pretty small meeting.
Thank you. Public Safety Enterprise Advocate, Georgia Holm.
There won't be a meeting until the end of the month, and there's one on Friday at the airport at eight and ten for the library and the golf course, Mueller Center, and Evansburg will meet on Wednesday. They each have a different time.
And the administration meeting will be the Wednesday before the second meeting in October. Anything on your finance officer report?
No.
Did we get a
Come on, Dan.
Did we get a strange valve, valve search?
I believe she did that before she left. Mayor. She, the mayor. Ms. Cindy. Okay, I'm into the mayor's report. I have two items. We are in receipt of the FAA planning planning grant of two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand dollars. Ninety percent is paid by the feds, five percent is paid by the state, and five percent is paid by the city. Also have a letter from Jim Bolsmer, resignation from the Hot Springs Planning and Zoning. And that's it. Motion adjourned.
Could I have one more thing? I'm sorry. I mentioned it to you. Just to tell the council about the final planning permission meeting two days from now.
Be at City Hall?
Yes.
Wednesday, the seventeenth?
Yes, sir.
At seven PM. Planning and zoning meeting.
Plat approval and rezoning of a certain property.
Right. Seven-ten is a hearing for Kara Hagan's request to rezone. Is that that property up off of Minicata? Scott?
I'm sorry.
Is that rezoning of Kara Hagan's off of Minicata?
Uh, no, that one's already been rezoned. This property is behind Evansburg up on the plateau that Jim Bost used to own.
Okay.
Twelve acres.
All right. Okay. Is that it? That's it. I have a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Everybody that don't agree?